Right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible. Okay, so my book. Madam Clerk, could you call a roll?
A quorum is present. A quorum is present for the City Council, Successor Agency, and Housing Authority.
Any persons which address the council on any of the agenda items, are we, who have any items polled, which, which persons were polled, except for items seven and eight, can speak on them at this time?
I'm Joseph Texer, and because James Butts likes to illegally interrupt speakers, let me be very clear, I object to the warrant register payment to the mayor's personal propaganda rag, Inglewood Today News. I object because it's wrong for James Butts to use our tax dollars to pay his personal public relations expenses. We should use another tape paper because Inglewood Today's crooked owner, Willie Brown, will print anything James Butts wants him to print and hide any stories that James Butts wants hidden, even stories that are reported nationally on radio and newspapers, on TV, and even on the nightly news. Willie Brown deliberately and repeatedly lied to his readers, to Inglewood's voters, and he was sued for libel for doing just that. A judge said that Brown would likely lose the case, so Brown had to pay a settlement and print months and months of retractions. The latest example of Brown's covering up James Butts' serious crimes is one of the most serious. On April 30th, James Butts is waiting at a red arrow in a left turn lane by USC, and he deliberately decided that he wouldn't have to wait like everyone else. No, James Butts decided that he would illegally run the red arrow and make an illegal turn. And he made that decision knowing that there was a six or seven foot concrete and steel median that made it difficult, if not impossible, to see some oncoming traffic. It was irresponsible, it was dangerous, it was illegal. But James Butts decided to illegally and dangerously run that red arrow, cutting off a woman in oncoming traffic who was taking her four-year-old child to daycare, causing her to be taken to the hospital, and causing who knows what long-term physical and/or emotional injuries to the child. James Butts' illegal and dangerous blind left turn caused him to spin into a traffic cop, sending the cop flying and sending him to the hospital with serious injuries. James Butts' illegal and dangerous actions did cause serious injuries, could have killed several people, and will cost this city hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars in overall costs. Now, James Butts hid his crime and the injuries he caused at that week's council meeting. And at the next council meeting, he despicably deceived Inglewood's residents, failing to mention that the women, the woman he cut off went to the hospital, and most evil was James Butts acting like he didn't know what fault he had for the accident, when he knew for a fact that he was 100% at fault. James Butts illegally ran a red arrow when his view of oncoming traffic was blocked. Butts could not have been more in fault if he tried.
And he bootstrapped under Willie Brown. Thank you, Ms. Texer. With that, we'll close public comment. Item. Oh, Madam Clerk, what's the next scheduled matter?
Yes, Mayor, the next scheduled matter is a public hearing to receive public comments on the issuance of toll referral permits to provide the city's referral towing services.
As a, as a notice of hearing been scheduled, been given in a time form matters required by law, and do you have the affidavit on file?
Yes, Mayor, notice has been given and an affidavit is on file.
Have many communications been received on this matter?
No, Mayor, no communications have been received.
Is there a staff report? Sergeant Hurd? Lieutenant Hurd will be giving the staff report.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members and staff. I'm here to present a report on the referral towing service permit. Inglewood Municipal Code, Chapter Eight, Article Six outlines the city's process for granting a referral towing service permit. The applicant must first submit a form to the police department as well as a background check. Two companies, Brian's Inglewood Service and B&amp;H Tow, submitted applications to the police department. Both companies met the requirements of the IMC section, and both companies passed the background check. That is the end of my oral report.
Are there any persons present which address the council on the matter? Public council's comment portion is closed. Oh, please. Yes.
I wanted to say good afternoon. In regards to B&amp;H Tow, I understand it's not an attack, but I do want to clarify that B&amp;H Tow has processes that they don't follow. And I went to court with them twice, and I won against them. They illegally took a vehicle from me, sold it for a thousand dollars, it was a limousine. And in the course of that, I had to pay my partner, who was in the limousine business, and take a loss on the business in order to keep my word. And, really fast, because I know I don't have a lot of time, not only did they sidebar inside of the courtroom, we went to court twice. They went to court, they came out of court, and then they refiled the case like it was new. Fortunately for me, I have legal experience. I fought my case myself. There's a lot of people in the community that don't have that opportunity. They get their cars taken, they lose their jobs. There's a lot that's going on with that. And I've never spoken before a council before, but I believe in my city, and I believe in justice, and I think that that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. Because now that their license is on the line, it's important to them. That's not how it's supposed to go when it comes to our community and to our people. There's people that lost their, everything behind that. I lost two offices out of the four that I had behind it. And right after that, they took two other vehicles where the windows were busted out, towed them, and they're not sending. They tried to push it on to the police department in court. That's how, that's how cold they are. And I said, "It's not the police, it's your procedures. If you send and lean my vehicle and you send it to court, and that documentation never gets to me, then you have all intent to take my vehicle." And they've been doing it to a lot of people. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
My name is Willie A.G. I don't know anything about this towing company, but this young man that just spoke, I know him. If he got a problem with him, then I got a problem with him myself. And I, I would like to see the council really check this out. If he says something wrong with him, I guarantee you he's right. Finest young man in the city of Inglewood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Public comment is closed. Is there a motion?
Comment, Mayor?
Yes.
I would just like, I'll reach out to the police department identifying that although there was background checks, and they ultimately were approved upon the background check, now there is a process of procedures, and I want to make sure that the police department does stay focused on those issues such as the ones we just heard today. And prospectively, if that becomes an issue, then we may need to weigh in on one toll service versus the other until that is cured and corrected. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I remove item, move item one and two.
I'll second it, Mayor, if I could just add a little bit.
Go right ahead.
Just to add to that, when the referral, what, the referral process is basically goes to the police department, the police department refers one of the tow agencies, is that the way it works?
Yes, there's a boundary that splits both, both tow companies.
Oh, okay. And in regards to any issues that might arise within the timeframe of the 36 months, you would be able to address it if they came to you, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I feel better with that. Obviously, when, when a public hearing speaker comes up, and we really do appreciate it, brings some light to it, there is a short period of time between when that person speaks and we take action, so we're going to make sure that the process protects against possible situations like that, which now we, we can clarify that it's there. So, I believe I second the motion, Mayor.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, council members, Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. It's that counter, items two through six, seven and eight were pulled.
So moved.
Items two through six.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Council members, Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Item one, CSA one and H one.
Warrant register.
So moved. Second.
Madam Clerk?
Council members, Council members, successor agency members, and housing authority members. Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Chairman Butts.
Aye. A one.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a closed session regarding CS one, which is anticipated litigation. There was one item. Discussion was held, direction given to staff. Councilmember Dotson was not present during the discussion.
A two.
Thank you, Mayor. As to A two, there's no report from the city attorney's office.
DM one. There's no report from the city manager's office. EC one.
No report, Mayor, thank you.
CT one.
Thank you, Mayor. I did make a purchase of a CD on behalf of the city at the rate of 2.65, and also a Freddie Mac at 2.70. And also would like to mention regarding the latest national news, we have our trillion, our national debt now is at 22.027 trillion, and 2.128 trillion is contributed by President Trump, and our government debt to gross national product is 105%. The bond yield is for the two years at 2.18, the three years at 2.15, and the five year at 2.18, seven year at 2.28, and the 10 years at 2.40, and the 30 year is at 2.83. And also would like to mention regarding total, total household debt has risen for the 19th straight quarter, now nearly $1 trillion above the previous peak. In New York, the Federal Reserve of New York has issued its quarterly report on household and credit debt. The rate which credit card balances become delinquent has been rising, and that has coincided with the, an increase in younger borrowers entering the credit card market. That concludes my comments in my report.
Thank you. Public comment, any persons wishing to address the council on any Medicareed city business, not elsewhere considered to be due at this time, one minute.
Good afternoon, Mayor, staff, and council. I would just like to comment on the last week's incident with Mr. Butts, I'm here. I am not blaming or coming to pass judgment, I just would like to say, Mr. Butts, can you please get a personal driver? It's nothing to say, no, it's not anything to say about your manhood, or you can't handle anything. This is basically to protect you from getting into things, these things. You're being pulled in a million directions, and we understand that. And, you know, when you drive.
Stuart, Stuart, I've been driving the city vehicle for 46 years.
I understand.
We're working okay.
I know.
All right, thank you.
But here's, here's my point. I did say when I first met you that being a mayor and being a public official is totally different. It's a learning process.
Got you, Stuart.
Okay? So please, save yourself and this city, any, you know, embarrassment.
Oh, my goodness.
Get a personal driver, sir. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart, appreciate you.
Okay, my name is Julia Wallace. I write for Left Voice News, and I'm a longtime resident of Inglewood. I'm here to speak again, and continue to speak about the issue of affordable housing that the mayor has put together a proposal. As I've said, and other folks have said, particularly the 8% cap yearly is not enough to keep people in Inglewood. And many of us who have lived in Inglewood, we aren't getting 8% increases in our rent, and it makes it unaffordable for us. We're going to continue to organize as other organizations are happening throughout the state and throughout the country to fight for affordable housing. There's been articles that have come out about homelessness. Why are people homeless? Why are people homeless? It doesn't take a rock and scientist to know that if rents are not affordable, then you can't afford your rent, and then you're homeless. In one instance, a person couldn't afford their rent, and they now sleep outside of the home that they used to live in, in their car, because they can't afford to live in the place that they lived in before. So we're calling on folks to really get together and organize.
Thank you, ma'am.
Many of us are going to continue to fight.
Thank you, ma'am.
I second the motion that the mayor needs a driver, but it must be one that he pays for, not by the city. Also, he needs to be driving his own car, you know, it's, for a while, it's been complained that he's using an IPD SUV when he gets a vehicle allowance, and now I think he knew, I know why. Because he knows that he's a reckless driver, he knows that he breaks the law, he doesn't want his car to be damaged, so he says, "Let me get the biggest thing I can get that I don't have to worry about, any kind of fixing, I can just let the, the city fix it, and then I'll just drive any way I want. I'll hurt whoever I want, I'll break the law, it doesn't matter because it's not my car." I thinks he need to be driving his own car, get whatever money the city says, and follow the law. Because right now, he's doing what he always does, violating the law just for his own means.
Thank you, Ms. Texer.
Good afternoon, Mayor Butts and staff. This is my first time here. Alex Padilla, good to, good to see you. Most of you don't know me, but my name is Ken Williams, and I'm the ugly little guy that opened up the beauty school right there in Inglewood, 242 North Market Street. And I, that's my crude way of trying to share humor. But I'm here today because we have the most beautiful beauty college and barber campus that you ever might want to see, and I'm literally inviting you to come by and see. On behalf of my father, who just passed away, 93 years, we have a history of a school that has 90 years of history, from 1929 to present. And we want the city just to come see what we're doing. We're the only school currently in Inglewood. I believe there's another one that's going to try and open up, but when we apply for the special use permit.
We're at times, sir.
Okay. I would just like somebody to, to reach out and see what we're doing. Thank you very much.
All right.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Wallace. I'm also a longtime resident of Inglewood, and I'd also like to echo the organizing that we've been doing to continue to have affordable housing in Inglewood, and that the people who have already been affected by the increases that have been going on and the evictions, that even the 4% over two years, that's 8% that people are dealing with, on top of the increases that they're already dealing with now. It's not enough. Inglewood residents are making less than residents of Los Angeles City, and their annual rent control is a 3% cap. And so, we are going to continue to organize, to do the best that we can to make sure Inglewood residents can stay in Inglewood. And the piecemeal kind of reaching out that I've seen from the city council, or the actions that I've seen, really set to fragment a lot of the community, where a couple people get help, but not everyone gets help. Inglewood, 63% renters, the 63% renters of people need to get assistance.
Ms. Wallace, your time. Thank you. You guys, if you keep applauding, we're going to clear the room, all right? It's not a rally, it's a council meeting. Go ahead.
Greetings to JB and the crew. The purpose, or the main reason for me, to see why rents are rising, is because people are investing in Inglewood, the biggest two, the stadium and the Clipper Arena. For me personally, I don't see why the Clippers or the Lakers shouldn't play at the Forum. I think that it's been a great deal for the Lakers in previous times, and it could be again. So I'm hoping that the city will pursue that initiative to have one of the teams play at the Forum.
Sir, one second. Did you know that the Forum is no longer basketball capable? Did you know that?
I do, that's the reason why it's not competing entities.
Right, and so, so they can't play basketball at the Forum unless they drastically modify the Forum. I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Well.
I understand, I understand this.
Well, I understand that it's opposing interest.
No, 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 no. The basic thing is you wanted someone to play basketball at the Forum. The Forum is no longer constructed to house a basketball arena.
The Forum basically still has the same structure, they're using the floor now for entertainment.
Okay, I'm going to tell you again, that capacity was taken out, and it would have to be remodeled for basketball. Anyway, that's it, sir, I just want to make sure you understood that. For whom? And so, and so you're saying that they both, you know that they both would agree to that?
If the city, for me.
You see, okay, now, now, let's see, this is the lesson, see, the city doesn't own the structure.
Right.
The city can't tell anyone what to do with their structure. And that's what I want to make clear to you. You seem to think the city can, one, tell the Forum to remodel itself so the basketball can play there, and, two, that we could tell the Clippers and the Forum to get together and make a deal to play there. We don't have that capacity. That's it, sir, thank you very much.
Before I leave, I just wanted to thank the city council and the city for such a great job that they've done. Secondly, it's hard to have thin skin sometimes being attacked all day long. That's another commitment. We do have a lot of people that discuss rent and different issues like that, but Inglewood has made provision for some of the kids that are in the community, because we have a youth foundation, we have different businesses that we work, and we work interlinked with different people in the community. And these people have jobs that are $27 an hour, $30 an hour, so if some people get up off their bottom, they wouldn't have to complain about being able to pay the rent. So I would appreciate you guys focusing on the real issues and allow these people to really work on the city. There's some people that structure plans to attack people, that's not even necessary. We need to work together, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
My name is Willie A.G. Listening to the people. I think we have a process here in this country. You're not guilty until you're proven guilty. But you know, some people just have so much hatred in their bodies, I don't see how they can even survive, you know? This, this, this incident that happened has been trialed and found guilty right here by an individual that hates, I believe that he hates the mayor. I think that unemployment now is something like 3.5%. You know, I left Alabama because I couldn't get a job there. You know, if you can't get a job here, to pay your rent, you need to get on, go someplace where you can get a job and, and survive with the city. If it wasn't for this council here, I can tell you right now, this city would be bankrupt. You wouldn't have to pay.
Thank you, Mr. A.G. Thank you.
City council and the mayor, my name is Edward Edwards, one of the ambassadors for the Clippers, also a speaker for the new beauty college that is going existence here in Inglewood. Not only will it bring jobs, but it will also bring education to the young adults that are coming into the Inglewood area. We are here to bring jobs and opportunities for all those who are interested in that opportunity. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Same, city councilman and mayor, glad to see that you're okay. I walked in late and am personally offended by some of the comments. I am a hardworking, single mother, middle class, that can't afford a thousand dollar increase. I have no family to turn to, not because of anything that I did on my own, my mom passed. That's that. So, I am, I'm disheartened to hear the insensitivity that occurs. I get it, I'm all for development, I am all for growth. Like I have mentioned several times, I want my son to be able to work in whatever capacity or any of the entities that are coming to make our beautiful city, city. I am not a transplant either. I was born and raised in Inglewood. But to hear this, because some people haven't made already, it's, it's so insensitive. This could be your grandmother, your child, your son that you're fighting for, their future.
Thank you, ma'am.
180 school kids displaced right now, or on a, on a.
Ma'am?
Open case.
Ma'am, thank you right now. Okay, we'll close public comment. Council comments, Councilman Padilla.
Great, thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. And, you know, I, I just want to let folks know, look, this rent control, this rent moratorium, you know, we take that, you know, very serious, as we've commented in the past, and, you know, so, you know, your concerns aren't falling on deaf ears. We understand and we get you, and we're certainly going to work to, to do the best we can to find some medium ground there with that. That being said, this past Thursday, the mayor and I attended an event over at Crozier Middle School, it was put together by Team Primetime. It was a basketball tournament between Oak Elementary School and Warren Lane Elementary School. So there's a picture of it there, by the way, if you look at that Clippers logo on the ground, they're the ones that redid the basketball court there at Crozier. So the Clippers are involved in working in our community and helping our schools and our schoolchildren. And it was a great time, the mayor and I appreciate the folks from the school district and from Team Primetime for putting this together. I also want to mention that there's construction work being done along La Brea from, say, Florence all the way to 64th Street, and as you can see, there's a lot of trucks out there, a lot of work being done, just be patient, you know, try to work around it, take other streets, do, you know, use ways to get from a different area if that's what you want to use, but make sure that, you know, we keep our construction workers safe while you're going up and down La Brea. I know it gets frustrating, I see cars going, you know, driving crazy there and almost hit some of these guys the other day, so I just wanted to make sure folks understand that we're doing this to improve our city, and just be patient with us. Because as soon as we're through with that, we're going to work on also Centella through District Two from Los Angeles down to Florence. We're doing Century Boulevard, Imperial Highway, we're working on all our major thoroughfares. So again, just be cautious, keep your head on a swivel, and, and let's get this, these streets done. I also just, you know, I've always appreciated our police department, our men and women in blue that, that keep our community safe. This week is Police Memorial Week. If you get a chance, this is a photo from the Fallen Heroes Memorial that's at the lobby of the police department, right next door. So, you know, if you get a chance, come by and pay your respect to these officers that have paid the ultimate sacrifice here in Inglewood. So again, Police Memorial Week, when you get a chance to thank our police officers that are out there, whether you're in Inglewood or anywhere else, please, just give them a wave, thank them, you know, let them know you appreciate what they do every single day to keep our community safe. Now, I know that Councilmember Morales is going to talk about his fantastic, and I got to say, off-the-charts event that he had at Ash Park this past weekend, and I'm going to let him do that, but I just got to give him kudos, and Hyman, and everybody else, you guys did a bomb job. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm, I was like, I thought I was at Disneyland watching everything, and all the kids and the families there was, it was awesome. So I'll let Councilwoman Morales touch on that. With that, enjoy the rest of your week.
Yes, I just, I want to echo those same sentiments about the Ash Park or Ashwood Park. It was outstanding, well-attended, city residents throughout the city all engaged, participated. I was overwhelmed to see that they removed the barricade of the chain link fence that was at the park back in the many years that, that I used to be the park commissioner, and then realizing they had a waiting pool, and now they've changed that to now having a water facility with, with actual showers that's available there, and a number of exercise apparatuses that is there. So, job well done, and thank all the staff that was involved that, that made it happen, including this council. including this council for getting the money to appropriate it, to make this happen. And speaking of appropriation, I want to make sure that everyone understands your due diligence. As you heard, the council member for District Two acknowledge about the street improvements. Imperial Highway has been one that clearly needs some assistance. And we have now made great headway with the traffic lights finally put, being changed, concrete ramps and ADA ramps that are needed are being, have now completed. We're getting ready to start the roadway paving and grinding. Just ask for your indulgence because the game plan is to be through by June 2019. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to spend some time thanking everybody who helped Ash Park renovation and the family day take place. Start with my colleagues who without, honestly, it just wouldn't have happened. I remember some of the first conversations and it just seemed like it was going to be so far away to spend that kind of money on a park. And I'm just grateful to have their support. Jaime, Jaime, who's basically my right hand, who took it personal. We both grew up at that park and so he made it a special day for the entire community. And, you know, everybody pitched in, so we were happy about that. We had a special committee of three or four folks from the neighborhood who all brought their volunteers and it just, it made it happen. As far as staff, I want to start with Boy trees who spoke to us early on, promised it would be on track. We talked through out about making some quick changes. He stayed on it. And I wish you were there, Boy trees. You would have enjoyed watching everybody there. Staff, Sabrina, who's awesome department, Parks and Rec, who, you know, honestly, the Parks and Rec, they are the front line to our city many times. And so, you know, they are unsung heroes, so I appreciate everything, Sabrina. Teresa, who always does a great job with our staff and kind of her experience organizing really helped us out. The police department, who came out and were there the whole day, but has constantly been there, making trips throughout the evening because one of the things we did do was take down the fence. We took down the fence because the mayor said it best at the event. He said, "We are a different community now than when that went up." And I'll tell you that I remember, I remember not having a fence when I was a kid. Then I remember when gangs took over the park and we had a fence and it just felt really good not to have a fence again. So I look forward to the community enjoying it. It's a very, it was a very sincere day. Oh, there you go, Wanda shows up. She shows up for the picture taking at the last minute. I love you, Wanda. I love you, Wanda. Anyway, thank you for coming. But I hope everybody had a good time. I know the community and the best part about it was just that the entire diverse community that we're a part of was out there and everybody sincerely just had a great time. So thank you, everybody, and that's all I got. Thank you.
You know, it's hard to add anything to that. One of the things that struck me about that celebration was how organic it was as related to people from the community just being there to enjoy and celebrate government working for them and their children. Now, mind you, when you think about Ash Park, that property was just a dead area next to a freeway that the city converted into a park. And then it became a gang haven and the fences were put up because I was policeman in the city at the time because they didn't like to be trapped in a place and it only had two ways out. And so it was a mitigation measure. But it made it feel like, you know, a lightweight prison. And then so to come to a point of evolution where gangs are not the issue and that we could spend $1.6 million in a majority Latino neighborhood to celebrate the change is amazing to me. This neighborhood was the most impacted by the full motion video and advertisements that we have on Los Yenega. And it was only fair that a substantial portion of those profits go to upgrade the quality of life in the neighborhood. And I'm going to tell you something. Councilman Morales bugged me all the time about that park. And the grass, the, I, you see the pictures. It's just nothing like it, nothing like it. Now, one thing I'm going to recommend though is that we explore maybe a three-foot retaining fence so that balls, when they come off the basketball court, don't end up in the street. That's my only recommendation. I saw that. And so I'm going to ask staff to look into that, but.
We'll talk about it.
I'm telling you, you're going to have balls go out in the street, Eli. So just job well done. Jaime did a great job. Eli did a great job. His parents were there and he's fortunate to have his parents see all that he's accomplishing for the neighborhood that he grew up in. So congratulations, Eli. And we're adjourned.